Board of Commissioners, Wednesday, April 24th, meeting. Our first order of business is Phil Jones and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining us today. The first order of business is citizen input. If anyone's here that has something that's not a topic on the agenda and wants to speak, there's a blue form there and we fill it out. It doesn't look like we have anybody here with that today, so we'll go on to the consent agenda, number of items. Any questions or does I remove anything? No minutes. She gave up on us.
It's her day.
Good. So any, any problems with the consent agenda or seek a motion?
No, I would accept the consent agenda as listed.
Okay.
And I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? I went through these. It's like the sheriffs, I was just selling a lot of their cars as kind of their annual process. Couple of budget adjustments, basically. In addition, in respect to one of the grants we got, so. Okay, Commissioner DeAire?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. So the first action item we have today, so any of those, those of you who are waiting to see if we approve things, you got through that part. I believe the first thing this morning is a reading of a proclamation recognizing 2000, April 2019 as National County Government Month. So, and it looks like, Whitney, you've got something to say.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Whitney Hale. I'm the county's public information officer. As you know, April is County, National County Government Month, and it's a chance that we take every year to kind of celebrate the work that we do and the impact that counties make in communities across the country, but most importantly, the impact that we make here locally. We have a proclamation before you today that we worked with departments to gather statistics to kind of just give a sample of some of the ways that our departments make an impact locally. Everything from the number of calls that 911 answers to the number of tons of solid waste that solid waste processes. So I think hopefully the proclamation today just gives a sense of the breadth of service that's provided in Deschutes County. I also love to take April as an opportunity to remind folks that we do offer a program, County College, every fall that really gives residents a chance to understand what we do as the county and how they can better understand that and also get connected with us through volunteer opportunities and other, you know, boards and commissions that we have available. So our website for County College is available online at deschutes.org/countycollege, and I'd encourage anyone that's interested in learning more about what their county does to apply for that program, so.
Whitney, how many people do we usually have apply for the County College?
You know, in the past couple of years, we've seen a really big increase in the number of applications. I would hesitate to put a, I want to say we probably are receiving around 50 applications for 30 spots. So it is, it's competitive, but we really welcome folks' interest and do the best we can to accommodate as many folks as we can, so.
And it's every month, meet with a different department or maybe a couple of departments? Every, is it every week?
Every week, yeah.
Okay, every week for how many?
Program runs in the fall for 10 weeks. It's every Tuesday night. And it's just a great chance to get behind the scenes looks that you can look at, you know, what does a 911 dispatcher do on the floor, tour the landfill at night, get a sense of really what does health services do on a day-to-day basis. So I think we receive really positive feedback from that program and people just come away not understanding, they didn't know on the front end all that we do, and I think it's a really great opportunity to share that with them, so. Tom, I don't know if you had anything to add as it really?
Yeah, no, good job. You've covered it very well. You know, as you just said, people when they participate in County College or they had no idea the breadth of services that their county government provides for them. Counties tend to be a little less visible to the average citizen than their city or even their state and federal government because, you know, we're kind of provide basic services, you know, across the board that aren't quite as visible as, say, you know, a city policeman or, you know, a city road crew or something. But, you know, we take a lot of pride in it as employees of the county and the work that we do across the board, and we've tried to tell our story a little bit more over the years. And, you know, Whitney herself as our public information officer has done a great job in trying to communicate better and more, more extensively with our public through the use of social media and, you know, kind of presenting ideas to the media on things that, you know, may be of interest to the public, but also highlight the work that we do, you know, across our various array of services. So, you know, it's something that we do every April and a small chance for us as county employees to kind of celebrate a little bit the great work that we do in every department.
So the first statement on here is 3,069 counties in the United States of Americas. We all know, you know, 50 states and the territories, the United States of America, and you don't usually think about that number, 3,069 counties. It does cover all the land of the United States and all the people of the United States. So it's a really interesting level of government. I'm honored to be part of it and really proud of all the efforts that, you know, the staff and the folks provide all these services for the citizens of Deschutes County.
Commissioner DeAire, any comments?
I just want to say the county is an amazing operation in attending briefly the retirement of one of our longtime employees from over 30 years. I just, I'm so thankful that we have so many people that really do care and they do work extremely hard to make a difference. So we see it every day, and thank you.
And I'll add that, so I've been here two and a half years, so when you're outside the county government looking in and then you run for office, you get in and you realize how much broader and scope of things are. And we take, as Commissioners, something on County College, which is a statewide effort with other county commissioners. So we get to know the state of Oregon and how other counties operate, and we really do take pride in all the things we serve that really aren't reached by the cities of our, in our state, but really all of the residents that are not in cities, but we also incorporate the cities' interests, so. And it's one of the oldest forms of the government when we first became a country and have had a long role. So it is something that we network with other Commissioners and other counties and working with everyone here. It's, Phil, it's great to, when I first read this, it was like, well, we're going to throw ourselves a proclamation, but it really is important to the, so many citizens, and we try to do the best we can for them, so, thank you. So, I'd seek a motion, I guess, approving this proclamation.
Sure, I'll move approval of a proclamation recognizing April 2019 as National County Government Month.
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner DeAire?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Then I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the nation's 3,069 counties serve more than 300 million Americans and provide essential services to create healthy, safe, and vibrant communities, whereas counties provide for a healthy community, keep communities safe, foster economic opportunities, and much more. And whereas Deschutes County takes pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the health, welfare, and safety of our residents in efficient, cost-effective ways. In the past year, Deschutes County departments have provided vital services to county residents. Health services staff has seen more than 7,500 clients. The sheriff's office has responded to more than 35,300 calls for service. The road department has maintained 830 miles of county roadway. Community development has issued more than 1,500 structural building permits. Solid waste has processed more than 175,000 tons of trash. 911 dispatchers have answered close to 67,000 911 calls, and county veteran services staff have helped more than 9,100 veterans to access the benefits they've earned. These are just a few of the ways that Deschutes County makes a difference in our community. We thank our staff for the dedicated service they provide and encourage residents who are interested in learning more about county service to sign up for County College, a 10-week program we host every fall. To learn more about, visit www.deshutes.org/countycollege. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners declare April 2019 to be County Government Month in Deschutes County. All right, thank you. Do we want to take a picture?
A picture?
Should we take a picture, county government?
Only if Whitney's in it.
Okay, so, well, we can get somebody to hold it. We can get somebody to hold it.
Yep. Good, thank you.
One day we better have you in there too as a...
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Now we do.
Yeah. Oh, we'll make it somehow. Why don't you sit in here? Let's see, let's hold it up here.
All right, one, two, three. There we go. Got some great ones.
Thank you. Some great ones, I really took one.
Yeah, so we'll probably, we don't get, we'll probably have to take a break.
Okay.
See how long everything else takes. We could do other items too.
Okay.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is consideration of chair signature of document 2019-228 Notice of Intent Award Letter to Central Oregon Roofing for Reroof of the Facilities IT Warehouse in Bend. That'll be followed up, and that's Lee Randall with Facilities, and another one for another roofing project. So we'll take them both up.
Lee Randall, Facilities Director. This, the Notice of Intent Award for two roofing projects. The first is the Warehouse IT Building with Central Oregon Roofing. For both projects, we had good response to the public advertisement for bid. We had approximately seven contractors respond for pre-bid walkthroughs. In the case of the Warehouse Project, we had...
Get three.
Right, a total of six, six responsive bidders. And then for the Annex Downtown Clinic, we had three responsive bidders. We felt that the, the low bid for both projects came in at or below what we had budgeted, which was good, and I think due in part to the response that we got through the process.
On the Warehouse Building one, I'm familiar with Central Oregon Roofing, and how many of the others are located here locally of the?
Of the companies that responded, we had, for the Warehouse...
Signature's in Idaho, because I looked it up.
So we had one other local company respond, and they were the third lowest.
That's Eagle Roofing?
Eagle Roofing. And then for the Annex Downtown Clinic, the other two responsive bidders were both from out of the area.
Was, is Signature from Portland?
Signature...
Said Idaho.
Signature's from Idaho. Arrow Roofing is from Portland.
So I was just kind of curious if you thought the, you know, two of the three low bids on the first one were local. It seems like there'd be some real cost savings for them to do business here rather than traveling up with equipment and having to put their employees up overnight and all that kind of per diem stuff, yeah.
I would suspect that for the Warehouse Project, it was more cost-effective for local contractors because it's a fairly simple project. Given the age of the Annex Downtown Clinic and the amount of additional work involved in the roofing, there was enough additional work there and the contract and scope of work was enough larger that I think it made it possibly more appealing to an out-of-state contractor or an out-of-area contractor with their per diem costs, et cetera, being a lower percentage of the project as a whole. But I would, that's kind of just speculation on my part, but given how the bid responses came in, that may be an explanation.
The Downtown Clinic, that's the building up here, right? The, where we have mental health and, you know. And it looks like you're, are you demoing it first, I mean, taking off and then putting insulation and then putting boards and?
Correct.
One ply, single ply membrane, okay.
Given the age of that building, we're going to remove the insulation all the way to the wood deck. There's also some abandoned penetrations from old HVAC units that'll be replaced. And so there's quite a bit of additional scope of work, even though the square footage itself is less than the warehouse.
What is it? Do you recall the square footage of it?
It's approximately, it's just over 11,000 square feet.
What's the other facility?
Approximately 29,000 square feet.
Yeah, so that's a big, yeah. So there you're just putting a new surface on and doing things you're not tearing off or?
So we'll tear off the existing single ply, add a coverboard. Approximately, I believe it's either a half-inch or three-quarter inch coverboard that's specked, as well as replacing the metal coping on the parapet wall. But compared to removing all of the insulation, it's a much less expensive process.
What's a cover, so I assume a coverboard's not the same as plywood?
Right, it's a high-density material, kind of similar to the old Celotex board, for lack of a better explanation. There's a lot of different products currently out there, and typically the product is specified by whoever the manufacturer is who's supplying the single ply membrane. So each manufacturer has their own product. But it's essentially a half-inch thick board that then provides a clean abrasion-free surface for the new roof.
And is that the only boundary between the insul, between the exterior and the insulation? So if there's a penetration, it's through that half-inch?
Yep.
Is that as tough as plywood or tougher?
It's, it kind of, this is just my view, but it kind of meets the best of both worlds, so being high-density, it's impact-resistant. We can walk on it. We can even roll equipment on it if need be. But, but it's soft enough that you don't have the potential to damage the underside of the single ply membrane.
Any questions?
No questions.
I have a question. Have we used Central Oregon Roofing before?
Yes, in fact, they completed the community development roofing project last year.
Last year, and we were really happy with that?
Yep.
So you probably should go on Yelp then, maybe, or we're not allowed to do that? Because there Yelp, there's a range of reviews on Yelp for them, but Signature Roofing had like five stars from all their reviews. They had, so, I mean, I just, they are local.
Right, and we also look at things like their bonding capability and those kind of commercially-related ways of referencing and as well as checking the Oregon Contractors Board website for official complaints that may have been lodged. And in our review, we do our due diligence prior to this step. There is, there's nothing that, they met all of the requirements and in fact, they've done work for us in the past that went very well.
Oh, good. That's good to hear.
Yeah, they're 27,000 less than Signature.
Oh, I know, I know. It's a huge difference, but I just, Signature did have, like, everyone, you know, is roofing, sometimes roofing is not as credible as other contractors? And they have the highest workman's comp, don't they? Because it's very dangerous.
Right, in general roofing contractors do. And we are fortunate in Central Oregon to have several reputable commercial contractors, and we typically get a really good response from our local commercial, single ply, and other types of roofing contractors.
Because we've, I've been with A1, AM1 also, and Central Oregon's been here a long time. There's, yeah, several large scale could do a job like this. Okay, any other questions?
No, that's it.
I'll move Chair, Signature of Document Number 2019-228 Notice of Intent Award to Central Oregon Roofing, a reroof of Facilities IT Warehouse.
I seconded.
Okay, and any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner DeAire?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Move on to the next one, which is the Harriman Building, and we've already kind of discussed any further discussion about that.
These are the same products, different companies, different scope of work, but kind of the same product, flat roof and everything.
We use a performance spec, and so there are several manufacturers that can meet that specification. And for both roofs, it's an 80-mill single ply TPO product is the actual technical trade name of the product.
So maybe different brand, but it's the same kind of designs or whatever, yeah, okay.
I was a little surprised that there wasn't more, you know, not as many people bid this. Is it because of the demoing and the replacing insulation, or what are your thoughts on?
That would be my speculation, is it's a fairly complicated project, given the age and some of the additional work that needs to be done. And so it's just, it's a challenging project and there's... a challenging project, and, and there's a lot of work out there right now, and so I think, um, potentially contractors may have, uh, looked at that and considered that, and whether or not to respond.
The, um, would this be a project that might have some scope changer, change orders if they dig into it and find there's problems that they didn't, from forty years ago that they didn't know about?
When we do the complete, um, tear-off down to the roof deck, it helps avoid some of those, generally where we run into issues is where we intend to reuse all of the insulation, and then we get into the project and realize that we either have a leak we hadn't known about that never made it all the way through, um, and we have damaged insulation. So, in this case, um, we wrote a, a pretty extensive, uh, scope of work for the bid process that included, um, all of the insulation and, um, complete carpentry work for infilling the abandoned, uh, HVAC penetrations, et cetera. So, we tried to capture, um, everything with re-roofs in existing buildings, there's always the potential that you'll come across stuff that was unexpected, so, um, there, that potential is there, but hopefully we, um, wrote an extensive enough scope to capture most of those items.
Good. Need for the questions? entertain motion to?
Let's see. Okay, that one is, um, I move that we vote, um, for consideration of our Chair's Signature of Document number two zero one nine dash two two nine, Notice of Intent to Award Letter to Arrow Roofing and Sheet Metal for Roof Replacement at the Annex Downtown Clinic, one one two eight Northwest Harriman Bend, Oregon.
I'll second it.
Is, is this a company we've used before?
Um, we haven't used them, we're working, uh, with a consultant for inspection and, and application of the product, and they've worked with them extensively, so, um, we, we feel, uh, pretty confident going into the project.
Any other questions or discussion?
No.
Mr. Dare?
Yes.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Thank you. Right, so, look at this, we're ahead of schedule. Ten forty, so, are we expecting, um, I think any testimony? So you, okay, are you here for this matter? We're a little ahead of schedule, so we could wait until ten forty to start, um, or we, we, but we, we didn't expect, we, we usually run behind, so, anyway, we got through. One thing, if you're planning to testify, you'll wanna fill out a blue form up here. What's your pleasure, you think we should start?
I, it's a public hearing, I'm hesitant to start early just because of that statement, because it could be used procedurally. I mean, and this, this topic isn't so hot.
Dave, should we wait?
You could start, you could do the whole prep and, uh, take the testimony, that'll certainly get you to ten forty, and if somebody shows up that, uh, wants us to restate those initial things, we, I suppose could, good chance no one else will show up, so we probably won't have to do it again.
Um, I'm wondering, you know, technically the public notice was for ten AM, I'm not sure where, how that fits into anything.
Oh.
I'm happy to wait, um, I don't know.
Well, I think this one, we might be safe with proceeding, and you've gotta explain some things to us, I guess, and we can, I guess you're saying we could re-explain it if someone else joined us?
If folks show up at ten forty.
People watching at home rush down or something? Okay. All right, so Tanya wants you to go ahead and take it away.
Commissioner Henderson, you have the, uh?
Oh, I've gotta take, I've got it. So, I've got, so, this is the time and place set for a hearing for, uh, County File Number two four seven dash nineteen dash zero 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 one three seven dash TA. Uh, staff will outline the hearing procedure that will be followed.
The hearing's body, the Board of County Commissioners in this case, will take testimony and receive written evidence concerning File Number two four seven one nine zero 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 one three seven TA. The applicant to Shute's County is requesting approval of Ordinance Number twenty nineteen dash zero zero nine, excuse me, text amendments to incorporate changes to state law concerning historic accessory dwelling units. All testimony shall be directed to the hearing's body. At the conclusion of this hearing, the hearing's body will deliberate towards a decision or continue the hearing or deliberations to a date and time certain. The hearing will proceed as follows. Staff, in this case also the applicant, will provide a brief report. Opponents and proponents will present their testimony and evidence. Any other interested persons will then present testimony or evidence. The applicant, as the party bearing the burden of proof, will then be afforded an opportunity present, to present rebuttal and final comments. A full written version of the hearing procedures is available at the table behind me at the side of the room here. Commissioners must disclose any prior hearing observations, biases, or conflicts of interest.
Does any commissioner have anything to disclose, and if so, please state the nature of the same and whether you can proceed?
Uh, I have none, and my home is constructed after nineteen forty-five, so there's no benefit.
Okay. Mr. Dare?
I have none.
Yeah. The Chair has none, I think the only contact we really had is, uh, work sessions where we've discussed this hearing, and I think a prior meeting where we'd heard about what was passed through the legislature, but we don't have any contact with anybody that actually is part of this, um, group of homes or, not, at least that I'm aware of, so.
Does any party wish to challenge any commissioner based on biases or conflicts? Okay.
So I'll open the hearing, and, um, staff to proceed with a brief staff report.
Good morning, Tanya Saltzman, Associate Planner to Shute's County. First, I'm gonna give you a little bit of background on the proposed text amendments. Essentially, they're reflecting updates to state law. Uh, House Bill thirty twelve, uh, was passed in twenty seventeen, and that bill authorizes but does not require counties to allow a historic home located in a rural residential area to be converted to an accessory dwelling unit and a new single-family dwelling to be constructed on that same lot or parcel. So in Shute's County, this essentially means the MUA, RR-ten, UAR-ten, and SR-two-and-a-half zoning districts, and these would be on properties of two acres or more. Proposed amendments. The proposed amendments touch, uh, six chapters of the Shute's County Code in Title eighteen and Title nineteen. That's chapters eighteen thirty-two, eighteen sixty, eighteen one sixteen, and then nineteen twelve, nineteen twenty, and nineteen ninety-two. And a brief overview, as I just stated, uh, these amendments are stating that an owner of a lot or parcel within an area zoned for rural residential use, they may convert a historic home, and I will get to that definition in a moment, to an accessory dwelling unit, and then construct a new single-family dwelling on that same lot or parcel. Key definitions, you might be wondering, what is this historic home? Uh, for the purposes of this, this bill and these text amendments, it is actually just a single-family dwelling built between eighteen fifty and nineteen forty-five. It doesn't mean it's on any sort of register of historic places, it's purely a, uh, an age thing, it doesn't need to have, um, any particular qualities, it's just a, um, a time, at the time it was built. Single-family dwelling is defined as a residential structure designed as a residence for one family and sharing no common wall with another residence of any type. In other words, a detached home. Accessory dwelling unit is defined as a residential structure that's used in connection with or that it's auxiliary to a single-family dwelling. An overview of some additional, uh, conditions of these text amendments, the owner may not subdivide, partition, or otherwise divide the lot or parcel so that the ADU is on a different lot or parcel from the new single-family home. They may not alter the historic home, which is now the ADU, to become more than one hundred twenty percent of its original size. They may not rebuild the ADU if deemed a dangerous building due to fire or other natural disaster, and they may not construct an additional ADU on the same lot or parcel. This is very hard to see, but I also have paper copies of the map if anybody needs, approximately a hundred and thirteen properties in Shute's County could potentially be eligible. Uh, in reality, it might be actually a little bit less than this owing to lot constrictions and field conditions in terms of setbacks in the normal, um, processes for citing a home. One thing to note about House Bill thirty twelve is that it permitted counties to impose additional conditions, um, of approval as well as clarify, so I'm going to summarize those now. First, manufactured homes. The proposed text amendments allow manufactured homes as well as single-family homes to become that primary dwelling in the MUA and RR-ten zones, and those are already, uh, permitted in those zones. Owner occupancy, now this is something that a couple of counties in the state have, um, endeavored to go down that road, uh, these, these text amendments do not require any owner occupancy. However, short-term rentals, uh, they are prohibited in both dwellings simultaneously, so in other words, you may do a short-term rental in one or the other. Uh, Shute's County doesn't currently regulate short-term rentals, so, uh, we, staff felt it was appropriate to still allow it in at least one of those dwellings, so it's only allowed in one. And that is defined as thirty days, thirty consecutive days or less. Water supply, uh, the new single-family dwelling may be required to be served by the same water supply source as the ADU. This also pertains to wastewater, and this would, um, come up during the normal building permit processes.
When that says may be required, so you're just saying it's something that each time an ADU's built, or, I mean, a new home's built, that our CDD department and, um, would have to go out and look at whether we're, we're gonna require them to use that well or that water supply?
Correct.
And it would be just some basis of, how would they decide that? Because they're close together, or there's, I mean?
Well, I think it's, um...
Rationale they'd use to say, no, no, you need to, you can't, you know, you can't use it to second well, or?
I don't have that expertise, but, I don't have that, excuse me, sorry for interrupting. Um, I don't have that expertise, but I, I think our building department, through the normal permitting process and the kind of site evaluation, would determine that.
My, my experience has been that, you know, people build a house in a rural area, they typically can drill a well, and so I'm not sure why they wouldn't be able to drill a second if they wanted, I'm not.
I think, my understanding is this is clarifying that it's up to the applicant to define what's appropriate there, we're not ruling on it, because may gives them the opportunity to do an application that says, oh, they're co-located geographically and a well connection would be good, or they're not, you know, where a second well would be required, so it's putting in writing that it's up to the applicant to determine what's best for them. Septic may be different.
But see, I think it's actually that it's put, it's up to the, may be required would mean that the county building department would say, and usually be, you know, our water, you know, sort, would be saying it, and, so I, I read the opposite, so I, maybe...
Well, in the end, it ends up being a conversation about why would I connect it or not connect it, which is that opportunity.
Yeah, why it would be required to have a, share a well, I guess that's what this is saying, maybe.
Where we, yeah.
For the record, Nick Leelak, the Shute's County Community Development Director, and I just consulted with Matt Martin, a, a current planner who is well-versed in this, and he was explaining to me that it is, it's up, really up to the Oregon Water Resources Department, um, just as it is with any new dwelling that's proposed in the rural county that would be, uh, and generally, it's either a new well, but it very well may be the same well, it would, it would be up to the Oregon Water Resources Department to permit that.
So we're just saying that, we're kind of acknowledging that they have that right anyway to say that.
Exactly.
So, just like they do when you build a new house, you gotta go get a permit to drill a well.
Exactly.
And in the original language, uh, the state bill language, you know, the county could choose to always require them to be served by the same, but, um, this, this leaves it open.
Do that.
Right. Exactly.
I'm just wondering if that should say, to really, to, we're really just saying what's true, I wonder if it should say, new single-family dwelling may be required by the Oregon Water Resources Department to, so we're putting people on know, on?
Yeah, that it's not an opinion by a, a county staff person.
Yeah, with that, so that's just.
And note OWRD, okay, sure.
May be required by to be served by the same, because if, if we're not the ones really making that, this, this kind of implies that somebody in your, that's what I read it, I mean, somebody in your office could say, well, you know, you guys need to share a well, or?
Thank you. Uh, moving on, fire language, um, the proposed amendments clarify the phrase lost a fire, which is the original language in the state bill, um, that seemed a little bit vague, so the proposed amendments use, use language from the Uniform Code for Abatement of Dangerous Buildings, which is referenced elsewhere in Shute's County Code. And I can cite that, it's in the proposed text amendments. It also expands the dangerous building caused only by fire to include other natural disasters such as flood, wind, et cetera.
What about the case where, um, there's an abandoned old house, it was built in nineteen twenty, and it's an old farmhouse, and it's, it's been, you know, boarded up for years, not used for years, but it's still got a footprint? Could that's, and, and so someone says, well, I can not only buy this bare property with this old abandoned house, I can rebuild that house, because it wasn't burnt and it wasn't destroyed by natural, it's just, was destroyed by neglect or something, and I can add a manufactured home or a new, in other words, I can go from no houses to two houses, um, what about that house?
It's my understanding, and, uh, we did reach out to, um, the state about this, that the, the historic home must be a current historic home, you know, a current, currently livable dwelling, yes, exactly.
I think that's what you said.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that, I didn't know.
It's not written in the, in the, um, in the text itself, uh, we just note what a single-family home is and what a historic home is, I can go back to the, uh...
Just bring it up because I'm familiar with property and, and where there's a couple houses like that, that, you know, and there's probably some in rural Shute's like that that are not, are not inhabitable, but, okay, I'll just look at the definition then.
Yeah, I mean, the just, uh, historic home in this case is defined as a single-family dwelling built between eighteen fifty and nineteen forty-five, so, a dwelling would need...
Habitable dwelling, that word's not in there.
That's true, that's true. Staff's interpretation of it is that because it's a dwelling, it is, uh, actively habitable with kind of plumbing and kitchen and all of, all of that, but we could certainly put in language to clarify that.
I'm just something, I'm just unfamiliar with those situations.
Yeah, understandable. Sorry. Okay. Planning Commission public hearing was held on March fourteenth, twenty nineteen. Um, at that hearing, one individual testified in support requesting allowing manufactured homes and not requiring owner occupancy. Uh, there was no testimony in opposition, and after minor changes to reflect the deliberations, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve. The next steps now are, there are three options to move forward, continue the hearing to a date and time certain, close the hearing and leave the rec, written record open to a date certain, or close the hearing and commence deliberations. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Any questions?
So Tanya, you said it might be less than a hundred and thirteen?
Well, the GIS, like the mapping exercise that we did, you know, um, two acres or more in the following zones, built nineteen forty-five or before, that gave us one thirteen, but, you know, when it comes down to it, if each of those people are going in for a building permit, there might be limitations because of the lot size and setbacks and that, you know, field conditions that might limit it, it beyond that, but just on paper, kind of numbers-wise, one thirteen is that first, that first pass of eligible property.
Are you able to do that with a dial search, where you say it's these zonings, this age house and this acreage, I mean, is that that?
That's what that first map was, yeah, but that's what that first map is, um, to drill down further becomes a little bit more of an exercise.
One by one and look?
I believe so, yeah.
Little different than the late eighties when you open up the paper, right?
That's right, that, that, that's correct, and the other thing is there could be homes that we don't have records of, for example, that are in dial, that could be a hundred, that could be, um, older than nineteen, nineteen forty-five or, or earlier, that we don't have records of, but if the property owner has documentation or photographs or something, so, that could bump it up above one thirteen, but as Tanya said, it's, it's, the, the number is, is approximate based on all kinds of factors.
So I guess that opens the hearing then, and we've got one test, do you have something else, Tanya, you wanted to add, or?
I'm all, I'm done, I'm good.
You're here for support at this, okay. So, um, we've had a request to testify, um, is it Chris Bright, Brightenstein? Yep, okay, come on up and join us.
I want to thank you so much, and Tanya also for getting back to me to know about how to proceed with this. I did come and talk last Thursday evening to the board that was here, um, talking about a different, um, land use amendment coming up, and they encouraged me to come and speak. We do live, um, in rural, to Shute's County. I had a hundred and thirteen properties, it just seems like it's really, really un- Out, at 113 properties, it just seems like it's really insignificant. However, if you think about the other property owners around that are affected by growth in their area, you can see where you're affecting more and more people. And I think in order to limit that impact, one important factor would be that the land owner of that property is on-site, that that is their primary residence, and that they have the accessory dwelling. It may be, I know Tanya said that some counties have gone that way, and it may be hard to enforce, and I, I see that, that a lot of our land use issues are, are an enforcement problem with accessory dwellings that are not in compliance with the agricultural use of the property. So, I understand that that's a, a problem, but I would encourage that in order to kind of keep the peace in the neighborhood, because you are affecting three, five different properties, perhaps surrounding that acreage. The other main thing I would like to see an amendment for would be to limit properties that are already serviced as an infrastructure, as, as private roads, or perhaps those properties already are on a shared well. Then you're putting a lot of burden on, again, on people that already have a vested interest. Those other property owners own that road along with that person adding a home, or they are already on a shared well, and now you're bringing in someone else with another property. So, those agreements that have already been in place are now being challenged. So, those are the two main things that I think that if we could limit those 113 homes being built, that they do not already share an infrastructure of a road, private road, or a shared well, and that the property owner is on-site.
Okay, those are interesting points. Couple of questions, so you're saying that, I think the way it's written now, and maybe Tanya can confirm this, that it says neither, let's see, owner occupancy of either the accessory dwelling unit or the new single-family dwelling is not required, which means really it should be owner occupancy of neither is required, really, is what we're saying now, is you can basically have two rentals, and they can't, but they both, but only one could be a short, or, and one could be a short-term rental? And you're saying that one of those two residences should be owner occupied? And, and I, I kind of get that, I mean, I, I'm looking, I see this as an economic opportunity to people that are thinking about economic opportunity of, well, if I could have two houses out in the country and rent them both out, one could be, you know, it could be a, so I have some interest in that idea. And then what, with regard to shared well, are you saying that, okay, if, if they share, that lot owner shares it with some other people, should they be prohibited from having and, uh, being, this applying to them, or they're required to join the share-well agreement? Or what, what are you suggesting? Because I, that could happen.
Yeah, um, some, some properties are on a community well.
Yeah.
I'm talking about maybe two individuals, property owners, side by side, they have a shared well, wells on either property, and now one of those neighbors decides they're going to build another home, they're able to do that. Well, the agreement that's already standing between two neighbors is now being tested as far as adding a third. Usually, um, one of those neighbors is picking up the electrical cost, and the other neighbor's pitching in $10 a month. You put in another person on there, then not only is it the land use board saying, or Oregon's saying, you know, that doesn't have the capabilities for a third home with that well generating that much water, but you have an agreement already between just two people.
So, maybe one suggestion would be, if, if the existing historic home is part of a well agreement, they can't add the ADU, or they can't add the new home unless they get agreement by, to that well, unless they have the agreement from the other well partners or well agreement partners, that's...
Drill their own well, that the shared well is no longer...
Interesting idea. And then with the roads, um, because we have this, I mean, we have a hearing, our next hearing, we have all these, these issues, and so we've heard about this, so if they have a, a private road, um, that's a little more unclear to me, because a private road, you don't really have a contract on it necessarily. It kind of becomes everybody's obligation, but I don't know how many of them actually have agreements, like a well agreement. A well agreement, I've seen those written up, but, so how would that work with a private road?
In our neighborhood, we have five homes on a private road, and we did have one neighbor put in an unauthorized accessory dwelling unit, and it added 12 cars going by my house every day from the two people that lived there, because they made three trips to town, each one of them. There's not post office boxes, we have the lock boxes. The post office only has one for every property, so that would have to be put in there, otherwise they went to town in order to get their mail from the post office. I don't know what all the trips were, I know back and forth to work, recreation, night outs, whatever it was. It was a huge disturbance on our gravel, gravel road. We all pay, we all, well, basically, we take care of the road maintenance ourselves.
Do you have a formal written agreement, or is it kind of understanding?
Um, we have a, um, no, we have a, um, kind of a CCNR thing that was developed when that, when that parcel was subdivided into ten acres.
That's kind of like a contract, I mean, in a way, I mean, provides rights between the parties.
It does. I just feel like it's something that is an agreement between the people that are on the road, and so when you add other, um, other people to the, to the mix, you're not really dividing the, I mean, you can divide the maintenance costs, but you can't really divide, um, the structure itself of the road. I mean, we all chipped in so much of our property to have the easement.
That's interesting, because I, um, we have other legislation, or we're dealing with, the hearing after this, there's a issue of a private road came up, and who maintains it, and we have in the code that if a marijuana grow is above a certain size, and they're using a private road, they, they have to have approval by, to use it. So, there are cases where we have to have approval to do, use a road, I guess, or be, I, I don't know, we haven't, have we thought about these two or three circumstances and...
Um, I will say the, the private road issue has, has not yet arisen in kind of the, the research and the background work that we've done. Regarding the infrastructure or wells, you know, if, I believe that if, as, as Matt Martin hopefully noted, that OWRD kind of has to provide that vetting, I wonder how much of that would be kind of addressed in terms of shared infrastructure.
But they would really just be looking at whether the well had the potential to serve another house.
Right, and if it does...
That isn't the agreement, that's not the contra, I mean, I don't think they write, I mean, I've done, been involved with well agreements, I don't think they write the well agreement, so that's really a private contract, I think. Is, Dave, is that what your thought too?
Yes, and I, I would just point out that the code amendment that you're considering would not override or invalidate existing private contracts, those would still be enforceable to the extent they were before the code amendment, nor, as I believe Matt and Tanya have pointed out, they're not going to override state agency rules with regard to things such as shared wells and whatnot. So, um, those could all be impediments to citing the ADU, absolutely. The code may, you know, give a basis to at least a property owner attempt to do it, but there may be issues with access, there may be issues with shared wells and who's paying for it, and whether there's a contract for that shared well, which some adjacent neighbor could say, "I'm not interested in letting you on this shared well," and that...
So, the protection of the neighbor that didn't want him on the well is in the contract itself?
Arguably, it, it would be, I mean, I mean, in other words, you could, you could own that old, older house, and you're getting ready to put another one on, and, and Oregon Water Resources could say, "Well, we don't have a right, we're not going to let you do a second well." So, you try to put it on the first well, and the, the neighbor says, "Well, we don't..." Or maybe that's the reason why they require a second well, then, maybe they say you either get consent to be on the shared well, or absent that, we'll authorize a separate, you know, there's any number of nuances how that could play out, but I think the important thing for the board is to, to recognize that, should you proceed with the code amendment, that is not in any way invalidating existing contractual rights that property owners have vis-à-vis access, shared wells, those are still going to carry whatever weight those contracts carry.
Well, we're putting in here this requirement, I don't know what, where it is that, or this notice, basically, ordinance, where we're saying, what Tanya said, that the, it may be required by OW, that, um, to share the well, should we be putting no, I mean, we're, that's really a notice thing, it's not really a, we're not creating an obligation, we're just, so should we be giving a notice that if there's a well agreement, they may need to get permission, or, I don't know, should we?
That's a policy question for the board, not so much a legal question. The laws apply, period, whether we point someone to them or not, they're still going to have applicability, so, um, you know, if, if, if Water Resources says you need to have a shared well, or we're not going to approve the water source, and you can't contractually get approval from your neighbor to use the existing shared well, then it might preclude your ability to move forward with your ADU.
If I may say something?
Yeah.
At least, I know our son, he has a shared well, there's no contract between him and his neighbor. There's nothing in writing that says that he has to give the water to the neighbor. When he bought the house, there's nothing.
Well, um, maybe they have an implied contract, I don't, you know, I guess, I don't know what the courts would say, but there may, there's a practice that's been going on, you know, that's a different thing, too, so...
But I, I guess, I don't know why a, a statement couldn't be made that an infra- infrastructure already in place as shared private things cannot, you know, would preclude putting an accessory dwelling unit on that land. It just seems like if, if you're sharing something, you're not paying your fair share when you start adding.
But if the Oregon Water Resources Department says they can do another well, they're not really impacting the shared well.
That's true.
We just don't know what Oregon Water Resources Department will do, I mean, so that's, and we don't control what they do, so...
I, I understand that.
Are you asking us to prohibit the second home, or the second, I'm not, as, the second residence being built on one of these historic ADUs? If they're part of a, is that what you're asking us to do? If they're part of a shared well agreement or a private road? I mean, that's, I don't, you know, is that what you're asking, or?
Yeah, if it's, if it is part of a shared infrastructure, such as a road or a shared well, noting that if they are able to provide their own water source, that's fine, but not if it's a shared infrastructure.
Yeah, I think we've heard what you said, I don't, we are, I don't know...
Thank you very much.
Thanks, that's interesting, it's good to have some comments on that. So, we don't have any other, we're past the, you know, times, so is there anyone else that came to testify about this matter? And if you did, then we, we need a blue sheet. So, I guess that, at this point, we'd either do deliberations, or we would, um, post, keep the record, written record open. It's everybody's pleasure. What are your thoughts?
I think there's a discussion here, I don't know that there's a written record period, I think it's more of a discussion amongst ourselves.
Yeah. Mr. Dyer, what are your thoughts?
I did understand her point where the landowner should be present in one of the house structures, that it does make a difference on your neighborhood happiness if you have a vested interest in what's going on, so I can definitely understand that.
We would have a right to modify this text amendment to, if we wanted to, if that was a goal, we saw it, is that we're be, at least one of them would be owner occupied, so we're not just creating a double rental market, so to speak.
Correct, and I will say, I might add, that during the Planning Commission deliberations, this was a pretty big discussion item, and originally, they started out wanting to require one as the owner occupied, for all the reasons stated today, and then an idea was floated that, you know, perhaps there could be, this could be a hardship situation, you know, maybe they start out with the best intention, but then someone needs to move closer to town because of medical care, or something, you know, some situation that we can't necessarily predict, does that mean, you know, then they'd have to essentially sell their property rather than be able to rent out these two? That was just an, an example that was given, and they really went back and forth, and I think it's a, it's a valid discussion to have, but I think there's, you know, there's elements of both sides, but it was, it was considered, for sure. And it is, in my research, it's a little bit difficult to enforce, it is certainly doable, but in terms of kind of deed restrictions and that.
And we create it, and then somebody complains that there's renters living there, and then, then, then we enforce it, then, I mean, we, I don't know that we have a compliance program where we're checking who's living in those houses, but I, I see it more the other side of it, that I, yeah, it may be true that someone has a hardship with moving closer to town, but they may be selling it anyway, and I doubt that somebody's swooping in to complain about that as much as, I see it the other way of, this is a new opportunity for really landlords to create double rentals. I mean, I, I see it, I mean, it makes, because you've got two houses on that same X number acre parcel, that's, makes it pretty valuable, you know, and so it could be a rental. I mean, I, that makes business sense to me, so I, and I think we, I, I, I'm sympathetic with the idea of it being one owner occupied myself. Do we want to deliberate, do we, so these other two issues...
We were just talking about the record period, that's where...
Could I ask Tanya a question?
Yeah, yeah.
Tanya, did you actually map out how many acres for those 113? How many acres were they on? Because I'm just curious if...
Each parcel?
Yes.
No, they were just, the conditions were just...
I know, it's two acres or above, I mean, I was just...
We would forget that information, for sure.
I mean, I was just curious, because if, you know, this is all happening on like 20 acres or something, hopefully, that would be area for them to do their own separate well, you know, without conflict, without impacting the well that's already being shared by the community. That's just...
But see, I don't know, getting back to when does Oregon Water Resources say that you need to share a well? I'd kind of like to know why that would be a rationale, that they'd say, is it because they're close together, or is it because of the geology, or the water source? I mean, I, or it's because you've already got a so many a gallon a minute, you know, well, so we don't want to put in another so many a gallon? I mean, I, so I see a couple of things that I'd actually would like to get a little more background on, this would be one of them, to understand from Oregon Water Resources, I mean, I'm not sure we'll get any more. And then I'd like to see what other, this issue of, think through this issue of well agreements and road agreements, I, and maybe Dave, you could have some kind of, or Adam could have some kind of a, I mean, that's sort of, because we do have a lot of private roads, we, and be interested, and again, we could find out how many of these lots are on private roads or on well agreements, but that's a lot of work, but I think those are real things, people will get a lot, and then they'll find out that they're really on a well agreement, and then they, so they can't do it, but they've already bought the lot, and I don't know, it just seems like we should think through if there's any notice in our, I'd be interested in whether there'd be any notice in the ordinance to, about those issues.
Couple of thoughts in the big scope of things, remember, this was proposed as in the package of housekeeping text amendments last fall, and we pulled it off, said, "Hey, let's just make sure it's the right fit for Deschutes County." So, that's the path we're on right now, which is positive, but also, state legislature's talking about possible ADU amendments for the other residential, rural residential lands around the whole state, so this has got that impact. If we, if we go down a path for some reason now, it may kind of be the path we're going to go on if the legislature gives us the opportunity in the future, or... go on if the legislature gives us the opportunity in the future, or, you know, whatever happens. So I'm just saying there's implications for the next step if...
So you think we should maybe look, look at a couple of these things then?
Yeah, so, we're still at the record period concept is what I'm thinking, I, you know, does this mean we want something written into us or leave something open for a week or three weeks? I'm just trying to think through that at this point.
So, and what do you, what are your thoughts? Are you interested in further information on any of these specific?
I am. You know, I have been supporting, um, more dwelling units and, um, but I, you know, you have to think about the impact on people, so I'm respectful of that, but I, you know, I, I wouldn't mind hearing more in, information from the public.
So if, is it a little bit different with, if we have interest, or if we wanna hear a little bit more on some things or think about some things in terms of wording options rather than just deliberate today, can we postpone deliberations for a week or do we have to have a open record and, and then a response? Do we have to have the three-step process still or...
No, this is a legislative process, so, um, you could even have a conflict of interest, arguably, or at least certainly some bias as a legislator. So, no, you, there's no mandate on the open, on the open record, you might wanna consider, cause there's a pretty broad list of issues you folks have just articulated, maybe just continue the public hearing to a date certain, and in the interim, staff could try to supplement the record with the information you've asked for, and, uh, you know, if anyone in the public's further concerned, they can, you know, certainly come to that continued public hearing. If we do it to a date certain, uh, then that's it, there's, other than our agendas, there's no additional notice requirement, so that'd be what I'd recommend.
I would favor to, yeah, and I think maybe more than a week, maybe a little longer just cause...
Yeah, I think it'll take us longer than a week.
We're gonna talk about some of this stuff and we might have a further discussion about things to look, I mean, I could see talking to Water Resources that, what does this really mean to you as a water resource? When would you require people to share and, you know, we might be missing something, that, I don't know what it is, but then...
Would three weeks be reasonable?
I think three weeks sounds good to me, what, does that sound good to each of you?
Certain in three weeks, excellent.
Okay. Thank, yeah, thanks for joining us. Yeah, sure.
We were talking about how, um, the Senate does have the, um, bill in place that, um, add accessory drilling units, and I, I do commend you for saying, maybe we need to look at this smaller piece of the pie to see if we wanna make this, uh, a ruling that might follow us into a broader spectrum. Also, the state is real concerned with groundwater and looking into that, so I know septicists out in the rural counties might also have a little more, um, um, look at from the state to see if we're adding units, we wanna make sure we have the capacity and the, the land available to add more groundwater without affecting the good water that we're also pulling out of it, so that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, I'd, I'd propose we do extend it for three weeks, uh, leave the record open from the hearing and we'll kind of work, come up with a list of things we want.
So this public hearing then is continued till 10:00 AM on May 15th, and the record will remain open through and including that, uh, that, that hearing on, that continued hearing on the 15th, and then the board will decide how to proceed at that time.
Great.
And in the interim, I will do some research on the acreage of those 113 properties and start to delve into the, the water and shared well and shared infrastructure issues. Does that sound correct?
Yes.
Yes.
It sounds like the wells though, you may, that might not be public information? If it's just...
Well, I, I actually think it'd be a conversation with, you know, Kyle Gorman or, you know, or somebody, or maybe even comes and talks to us on the 15th and we ask him these questions cause we've, it's really been set in this ordinance from the state said, said this, but it's like, well, what does this mean and should we be doing anything about it? And how do they deal with well agreements? So we might have him come talk to us about that and what, what do they do with well agreements? I, I don't know if they honor them or care about them.
Might wanna check with some other counties that have already moved on this.
Yes, I will do that.
How many counties have done, adopted something like this, any idea?
You know, in my preliminary research, it seemed about, I can't give you a number, but it was more than half that I researched did adopt some version of this. Most of them honestly didn't make that many changes, most of them kinda took the state language and, like, just kinda put it in, you know, they put in a few little things, but I did not recall seeing anything specific, to be honest, about kind of wells or water. But I can absolutely do some further, further research on that.
We, you know, we also have the list served through AOC that if you, you know, I guess you can do it through planners, but I guess you have the same type thing, okay?
Yes, yes.
All right, so, close that out for today, but keep it open for the future. So the next item on our agenda is the, um, deliberations of the Price Marijuana Production Appeal at 703-55-MACKENZIE-CANION-ROADE-TERRABON. So this, we are ahead of schedule, uh, a little bit right now, um, should we be postponing this till...
No, you can, you can begin now, I'm comfortable we'll still be going at that point in time and if, if anybody shows up...
Deliberations.
We can ask them if they're interested in a recap or if they'll just watch it later tonight on the...
Yeah, it's deliberations.
On the, uh, on the internet, it's deliberations, they don't have a right to participate, they do have a right to hear, but, and, and be present, but not a right to verbally participate.
Okay. Why don't you kind of introduce this? Matt, I wanted to make a couple of comments before we get into the step-by-step.
Certainly. Matthew Martin, Deschutes County Planning Division. As introduced, uh, what's before the board this morning is deliberations on a proposed marijuana production at, um, 703-55-MACKENZIE-CANION-ROADE. Applicant Ted Price of Mackenzie Canyon Farm submitted the request for marijuana production including a maximum 4,960 square feet of mature marijuana plant canopy area. Public hearing was scheduled over two meetings before the board, March 6th and March 13th. Included in your packet for today are all of those materials submitted, um, prior to the hearing, at the hearing and during the open record period. Also included in your materials is a issue area matrix prepared by staff outlining the prominent issues that were raised in written and oral testimony throughout the process, including summaries of that testimony, uh, in opposition or citing concerns, those in support and some summaries or comments from staff, and then, uh, what staff has identified is the, the board's decision points on each of those issue areas. Uh, the format of the matrix is, uh, is, we're using a format, uh, of green, yellow and red, um, those items that are, are directed at specific or applicable review criteria. Those in yellow that may be tangentially associated in the, in yellow, and then in red, those that aren't directed at, um, identified applicable review criteria. As you'll see in this particular matrix, no, uh, yellow, um, items were identified by staff. Happy to, um, answer any questions or assist in any way I can with the deliberations, but I'll pass it back to the chair. Thank you.
So, um, so typically at this point in our, our, um, we just go through the matrix, but I wanna make a couple of comments today about this, um, particular application and the, and the appeal of it. To me, of all the ones that I've heard, uh, a hearing on or appeal on, this is the one that kind of most, um, probably has the most issues in it and most kind of solidifies to me why I wish we'd had a vote by the, the whole county of whether or not we would allow marijuana, uh, production in rural counties. I, I was very, um, more, I think more than any other one, we've had a large number, I mean, all, every neighbor opposing this. It also, and, and it, it highlights it, and there was a, a comment made by Lindsay Paye, who we've heard before, was on the Marijuana Advisory Committee, that really brought home the whole challenge with this issue to me is, and she, in a letter, and I like her and she's been helpful in other hearings to inform us on things and et cetera, but she said, "Concerns such as road condition, property values, visual impacts, quality of life, children living nearby, or assumed increase in crime as it relates to cannabis farming and property configurations do not have standards in our code to justify denying this land use application." And to me, this brings home the whole heart of it, if, if none of those things matter, what are we talking about? And why do we live here? Why do people choose to have a house here? And so, we're saying this, one farm use can override any of those concerns, quality of life, property, the things that all of us think about where we live in our own personal decisions. So I just, I thought that was an interesting comment, I, I understand what she's saying, that those aren't the criteria, criteria we measure it by, uh, a marijuana, uh, appeal, but those, it seems like those are the things we all think about every day, so that's why I wish we could have had a, to vote whether rural Deschutes and all of us just wants it. The other thing that, what I think was true in this, it's, it's interesting, is there's a lot of challenges in this that, to me, don't rise, and I'm just, I'm, before I do the matrix, I'm gonna tell you kind of where I am because I've kind of organized my thoughts that way. On the, the road, the private road, I mean, we've seen the problems with it, but we also see the technical ability to, where you, you're supposed to get access or kind of permission if you're gonna be on that, but if you say you're, you're only doing so much marijuana, you don't have to, and so we've, and, and so that, that seems to be a problem that you can get around by the technical ordinance, because they're saying they're gonna have less...
Than 5,000.
Less than 5,000 square feet. This issue of lack of fire protection in rural areas for basically what's an industrial, you know, 5,000 square feet's a lot of, of facility, and, and indoor facility and with equipment and things. The risk of crime and when, when no one's living there is a real thing that we've heard about in other places in the state where there's been break-ins for marijuana grows or et cetera, that that's a risk to, I think people there, the overall opposition. I, the youth activity thing was, is interesting to me, but I've, I've concluded that what was alleged here doesn't raise the standard that I think a youth activity center is, and we'll talk about that more. But then the, the noise, lighting and odor things are the things that do impact that we're trying to regulate, and without hiring experts to prove something different, the neighbors are all just unnoticed that it, if these come up, they've gotta file a complaint and we've gotta investigate, but, but I think all of those really have challenges in terms of what our written criteria are, that the, the application meets those unless we stretch way beyond, that's my feeling. The three things that I'm most concerned with or, and have thoughts on, we'll talk about in the, uh, dealer, are the water issue and the, the whole issue whether they have sufficient water and do have a water, electrical service, and then the presence of the eagle's nest, which we've gotten some more information on, so that's kind of where I am on this whole thing, and I just wanted to say it because I, I'm very sympathetic with the people that live in this canyon and, and what they're looking at, I understand the desire by people to have marijuana grows, but it just doesn't seem like there's much of a middle ground there, so that's just my initial thoughts on it, but, and I don't usually do that, but I thought this one was just kind of interesting in all those ways, and for those of you that have been, been active in the process, that's kind of my general thinking about, um, we work within a certain criteria that we have to evaluate and we create tests for, and they're, they were set in motion year, a few years ago, but anyway, does anybody else have any opening comments or thoughts?
Well, I can concur with those thoughts. I also saw that we, the, um, federal forest, um, Fish and Wildlife, um, they sent a letter in, um, then we had the state letter in about the golden eagles, they're only 600 feet, and there were a lot of buildings proposed, and it's, it's kind of bringing back what, um, the rural resident just said about her well, this, you know, where she wanted to have, actually have a homeowner there, there is no home on this property. So it means that the actual appellants, Tim and Wendy, will be in such a vulnerable position because their house is the house that looks like it goes with the operation, so, and it's an original farmhouse from a long time ago. I mean, it's a beautiful canyon, and people are, um, they chose to live there, they love living there and they love the peace and the quiet. They realize when they call up 911, nobody's gonna come for 45 minutes and you have to be able to defend yourself if there's a fire. It's, it's, it's a lot of really hardy people and, but they chose it and they love it and they wanna, you know, I can respect that. They wanna keep their home.
Yeah, so, I think as an elected official, I'm supportive of making sure it's not us and them, I mean, it's us and our society, our community. Uh, somebody that wants to do something that's shockingly different than we've done in the past is something we need to digest as a community, so I'm just letting, you know, my frame of mind here, uh, you know, it's a, a vote, it's a transition in our society, but yeah, I mean, this is land use for the whole county.
Are you, do we agree to kind of walk through the matrix then now?
Sure.
Okay, so you wanna lead us with that?
Happy to.
Issue number... Do we start on page, is it two of...
Page 1 of 5.
1 of 5, where's...
1 of 5.
1 of 5.
Looks like you may have large format ones available.
Absolutely. Oh my gosh!
Really?
Hey!
So you've heard, we do like big paper.
Good, that's an after... I did work on it with my magnifying glass last night though, and so we...
My goodness, I could read it.
I had reading glasses. I'm older than him, I need it. He's young.
This is the same matrix that was submitted into the board's packet for today's meeting. If ready, uh, I didn't find issue number one, the applicability of the siding and fence standards of the wildlife area combining zone. This area is a mapped, uh, as the Metolius Deer Winter Range and therefore zoned wildlife area combining. Within that zone, there are identified siding standards as well as fencing standards for new development. The app, uh, appellant and other testimony have indicated or assert that, uh, those standards apply to this proposed marijuana production facility. However, as, uh, identified in the code, staff's interpretation or reading of the code for the siding standards is that those are only applicable to new dwellings, and, um, clearly this is not a proposed new dwelling, therefore staff found that the siding standards weren't applicable to this proposal.
So for clarity, so a new dwelling referring to residential dwelling?
Correct.
Opposed to a agricultural building with agricultural activities?
Correct.
So either one is development, it's a structure on the land, but the rules are for a residential structure?
Correct. Term used in the code is dwelling, right?
Yeah.
Yes, residential dwelling unit. Secondly, the fence standards, um, for new fencing constructed as part of a development on property in conjunction with a conditional use permit or site plan review. I highlight that those two terms because this project was not subject to a conditional use permit or site plan review, therefore staff found, um, that the fencing standards aren't applicable to this proposal. To go further, I, the applicant's burden of proof statement indicates that no new fencing is proposed. So the question before the board, as summarized here, is whether or not the siding and fencing standards of the wildlife area combining zone are applicable to this proposal, and if so, does the project comply with those?
Okay. So I was reading the letter from, um, Matt Stuber, from, um, let's see, what is his actual, US Fish and Wildlife Service, Pacific Region Eagle Coordinator, and, um, according to his, the nest is 600 feet to a golden eagle, which seems a pretty short distance.
I think that's the next topic.
Okay.
That's issue two. This is, um...
Okay, this is only the fence?
Only the fence and the, um, the weather, it's wildlife, other, the, uh, the bird one is the next one, right?
Okay.
Correct.
All right, sorry about that.
So yeah, I mean, this is agricultural activity, just like my questioning kind of confirmed that this is building structures, it's not in the code specifically. Applicant talks about, uh, constructing a site plan not to erect barriers or to impede wildlife, so we're thinking about wildlife on the ground, so the next one will be in the air. So yeah, I, I do support that, uh, the fencing and siding standards are not applicable for this agricultural activity. And that's the black and white of the code, if, you know, if the intention is a bigger thing, that's a change of the code.
I, I conclude the same thing on this, that, um, the code's pretty black and white when you, we have to put that in and when we don't, so, um, I don't know what, they're, they're building some things, but... things, but they're not, it's not what the wildlife zone controls, so, combined zone. So, you have any...
No, I just, no, I just have a question. Matt, on the packet page 162, are they, they're still planning on doing all those structures?
When you say 162, I don't have...
It's packet page, it's the development, it was like one of the, it's the last document in our packet.
It's called development area, it's this one here.
Yes.
Okay. Yes, no cha, so, sorry, thank you, that's the staff presentation. That's a copy of the site plan that was submitted with the application. No changes to the overall development proposal have been submitted, so their intent is to construct the identified structures.
Okay.
But there's an existing structure, then the four or five are outdoor greenhouses, right, and then there's another building?
Correct.
And then some storage, yeah.
All right.
So what's your thought on that? Item number one?
No, I just wanted to know how many things they were planning on building, and what was the square footage of all those buildings?
I don't have a total square footage available.
Is there only doing 5,000 of mature canopy, is that right?
Yeah, as I, let's see, I want to remind us of the plan, so there's the four...
Yeah, so overall, and not to interrupt you, but the proposal includes a total of five greenhouses, four for flowering, one for vegetation, one trim building, one storage facility, one storage container, one shop building, that's the existing structure, and I've identified, summarized, the other ancillary site improvements for the site. And as proposed, the applicant is proposing a maximum of 4,960 square feet of mature marijuana plant canopy.
That, is that in one of the five buildings?
Greenhouses.
Greenhouses?
Presumably, in the flowering greenhouses.
So it's 20 acres, isn't it?
Yeah.
Total property is, I believe it's 21 acres.
Yeah.
All right.
Approximately 21.99 acres.
So, so I think what, what Commissioner DeBon and I are saying, it may be that all of these buildings and this, all of this stuff that goes on affects wildlife, you know, deer, well, moving through it, but our code currently doesn't allow us to, doesn't have anything that provides that you can change, you know, create new regulations about what they do based on that, that this is, wildlife combining zone affects new residences is what it affects, or...
Well, to be...
Controls.
Correct, yeah. What's, the wildlife area combining zone allows uses permitted outright in the underlying zone to be permitted in the wildlife area combining zone, with exception for some others, more intensive types of uses. But in particular, focusing on these development standards, the siding standards, the fencing standards aren't, have been determined by staff to not be applicable to this type of proposal.
A fencing standard in a wildlife area combining zone is a maximum height and a minimum, minimum bottom?
Correct. Yes, if proposed as part of a conditional use permit or site plan review, requires no taller than four feet in height, and a gap of no less than 18 inches from the ground to allow for passage either under or over. And with, there is a small exception, that you can encompass no more than 10,000 square feet with a solid barrier fence. The idea is that you could enclose sensitive items, your own personal garden, keeping your dogs in, that kind of thing.
But we don't have that situation here.
Correct.
There's no enclosed area.
Correct.
And, yeah, and the idea, the way, and the thing you said first was, what was that, is accurate, that there's things that are allowed uses, permitted uses in a wildlife combined zone, and ones that aren't, and marijuana production is not one of the ones that aren't permitted.
Correct.
We went through this at one point, churches weren't permitted, I remember that, or some other things we, in other hearings, but, so that's what you're saying, and then if, and then we're also not doing the kind of thing where we'd regulate the fences at this point, so, okay. So, we just need to say yes or no, Commissioner Dare, in terms of your feeling on...
Well, I did read the letter, again, from, let's see, this is from Simon Ray, and that letter, it's just about the wildlife zone, that it said, we have an error from Deschutes County, because as a result of this omission, the county has determined that the property in question is not subject to the provisions of the combining zone. So, there's that error that, it's, it's not even, it's not this combining zone to begin with, because of our error.
Mr. Ray's comments from...
That March, that letter was March 20th?
March 20th, I'm referring to the golden eagle nesting sites.
Right, but yes, it's saying that we're not the combining zone, is...
Yeah, we're speaking, excuse me for interrupting, we're speaking to the wildlife area combining zone as...
I know. There's two different, there's, you have the combining zone for the wildlife, and then you have one for the birds?
Correct.
Okay. All right, because it said that we weren't, so how could it be for one and not the other?
Different zones that are applicable to different habitat areas.
I've never heard about the sensitive bird and mammal habitat combining zone, it's not the same broad wildlife combining zone that we have elsewhere.
Correct, yeah, they're very specific to the identified inventory Gold Five sites, and very specific conditions that are applicable to those sites.
So, Commissioner, like on the wildlife combining zone, the map, when we were doing Shepherd's Church?
Right, it's on the backside.
It's a massive area, I mean, it's a whole, where you're saying these are specific areas that are designated or inventoried or whatever.
Inventory specific sites or habitat areas.
Okay.
Because we, I haven't had that before, so...
All right.
So, once again, where are you on number one? Are you...
Sounds like they're, it's, it's not applicable, right?
So, yeah, that would be answering no on the question of other standards.
So we don't continue on?
Well, no, we continue if...
Number two.
Yeah, we go on to the next one.
Okay.
So this is the bird one, the eagle's nest and all that, and then these letters.
So Matt, are you clear that was a 3-0 on?
Yes.
The answer is no, continue on to the next.
Issue, identified issue number two, the applicability of the sensitive bird and mammal habitat combining zone. These are specifically identified nesting or other sensitive bird and mammal habitat locations that have been inventoried and zoned, sensitive bird and mammal habitat. The record includes, and I think it's quite clear, that there are two golden eagle nesting sites within the vicinity and in relative proximity to the proposed development. And there's concern with the impacts associated with development within that disturbance area, both identified by the appellant residents nearby, and comments from U.S. Fish and Wildlife, as well as Oregon Department of Wildlife. However, Deschutes County's comprehensive plan, in particular, the Gold Five inventory for wildlife resources, does not include these two golden eagle nesting sites, and therefore, have not been zoned sensitive bird and mammal habitat. And staff, so staff's conclusion was because those sites are not zoned sensitive bird and mammal hab, combining zone, the provisions of this particular zone are not applicable to this project. With that said, and as identified in staff's decision and in the matrix, despite the fact that these sites are not included in the Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan and the sensitive bird and mammal habitat combining zone, that does not relieve them of the responsibility of compliance with applicable state and federal standards. So any of those federal standards in particular, as cited by U.S. Fish and Wildlife, the Migratory Bird Treaty Act, and the Bald and Golden Eagle Protection Act, the applicable provisions and permitting requirements of those federal legislation or laws would be applicable to this proposal. So I want to reiterate that even with the county not having it identified and inventoried, EC analysis completed, et cetera, they would be subject to any of the federal and state laws. So the question before you, as presented in the matrix, is, is the sensitive bird and mammal habitat combining zone applicable to this proposal?
Well, I think you basically just said the words, yes, they are. Would you agree? I mean, because, I mean, this is a big topic here. It's not specifically inventoried, these two nests, but we, the intention of the comprehensive plan and our rules are to protect. So then we get to, is there a poss, I'm thinking, do we get to a possible condition of approval, or is it a black and white stop? So that's...
I guess to reiterate, the eagle's nests are not zoned sensitive bird and mammal habitat. Therefore, to put it in my words, the door to apply the sensitive bird and mammal habitat zone is not available to this proposal. What I was trying to identify or indicate is that there are state and federal standards and protections for protection of these, of these golden eagle nesting sites that would be applicable to the project outside of our local land use, outside of our regulatory jurisdiction.
So then, yeah, so the applicant has acknowledged there's, you know, impact acknowledgement, if they need to get a permit or not work during specific times, you know, they're willing to do that, so, okay. Yeah, because, yeah, this will be an interesting...
Yeah, so, but, so, then, of course, what ODFW says in response to you is, well, not so fast, that they say that, that under this OAR, which is in that letter, the March 20th letter, that inventories provide the information necessary to locate and evaluate resource and develop programs to protect such resource. However, this section also indicates inventory process is not always necessary prior to the protecting resource. Initial inventory step in section two of this real, was not applicable in that a local government may rely on information submitted by applicants and other participants in the local process. So to me, it's like, and then it goes on from there, that we have an area that should be inventoried, it sounds like, and we've have, and our test here is substantial evidence. We've had substantial evidence testifying about this from a number of people that are aware of it, the two agencies are aware of it, and so, we do, I think, have our kind of purview to say there's substantial evidence that, that it does, like you said, does fall within the combining zone, and so, even though it's not inventory...
It's implied to be.
Yeah, it's intended to be, yeah. And then there, and then he said that, well, he cites the wrong comprehensive plan element, but we have that in the current comprehensive plan, too, so the fact he cited the wrong one doesn't mean he's wrong, it's just, that's technically correct. So I, I was kind of persuaded by the, both the federal and the state, that this is, we weren't very sure when we were doing the hearing how they related to it, but I, I do see, and I've never been involved with this either in a land use thing, but it seems like this does pertain to our situation here, and it would, to me, is grounds to prohibit those structures and that activity without permitting, without compliance of everything. And there isn't really anything in the record saying they've, they had, they necessarily will comply, they said they won't build during a season. But this says more than that, what they've told us.
Human activity is what they're referring to.
Human activity, so that's more than building. They're going to be there with, you know, facility, a lot of employees, a lot of people.
If I could interject, I respect Mr. Ray's comments, but I disagree with his assertion. His citation of OAR 6600230030 is referring to the inventory process. I recognize his comments in that an inventory is not required, but what this is referring to is in the scope of a particular PAPA, Post Acknowledgement Plan Amendment, or Periodic Review Work Task. This is not that.
Yeah.
It would be the process of updating your comprehensive plan. Further, citing the definition of sensitive habitat area in the particular zone, cited 18.90.020, definition of sensitive habitat area.
Is that...
This is in our code. I, it's not in the record, I'm citing what is, is in our code, excuse me, it's in, within the staff decision, but the sensitive habitat areas, the area identified in the Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan Resource Element Inventory, and site-specific EC for each sensitive bird or mammal habitat site. And it goes on to describe those particular areas. My concern is that we don't have an EC analysis for any of these sites, so if we were to even open that door and apply this zone, we don't have the requisite documents to ensure compliance with that zone.
Well, and so then, I'm letting you, I could get to, no, this doesn't apply, which is, kind of let this proceed, knowing that, you know, the, the analysis of this letter that Matt, you just mentioned, is the fact that it's kind of out of context how the paragraphs were used. The intention, though, would be to protect, obviously, and the applicant is offered to do whatever's necessary. Land use approval at Deschutes County means if the federal, U.S. Fish and Wildlife have a permitting process or, or specific time requirements, that, you know, that be followed. So maybe there's a condition, or it's already written up in there, that, you know, other regulations shall be applied. I mean, it ends up being that belted suspended statement for...
Sure, certainly. And the, the challenge of conditioning a, a, a local land use decision is that the condition needs to be linked to a local criteria.
Yeah, yeah, so I understand that. I don't support trying to link it to something outside of our system.
But in the, the staff decision, and certainly if the board, you know, dependent on the board's decision, we can reiterate and accentuate, and certainly continue to coordinate and provide necessary notice to the state and federal agencies that...
But, so let's go on to the federal letter, which came in from Matt Stuber, email. He says, and it's paragraph one, he's talking about the facilities, activities proposed in this application, six to eight additional buildings and other ancillary site improvements have been proposed within 600 feet of a known golden eagle nest. The proposed activities will permanently alter the existing landscape, and although it is not detailed in the application, seems to have a likelihood of catalyzing a long-term increase in human activity in close proximity to known golden eagle nest territory. We think is likely that the activities proposed will cause disturbance of the nearby golden eagle nest. Nest disturbance is a form of take, and as such is prohibited by the Bald and Golden Eagle Protection Act. So he's, and then he goes on to talk about how you can get a permit to do a take. So, that's a different level than the, what the state, Oregon Fish and Wildlife was arguing, and that, this actually seems to have more meat to it, to me, than, I mean, they're saying it's kind of a, what we're proposing is prohibited without getting a permit, which is what you said, but it, I mean, there's kind of substantial evidence that there's a problem here with this nest.
They're, they're talking about one mile in the second paragraph, and it says, this distance can be decreased to one half mile if the landscape alteration will not be in a direct line of sight from the nest in question. But the first paragraph said it was within 600 feet, so, you know, we're way under a half a mile.
Yeah, I, my response to that is that this is similar to the Oregon Water Resource Department discussion that was held before. Other agencies and jurisdictions, or state and federal, have standards that aren't under the purview of Deschutes County, and please chime in, legal counsel, if I'm off track here, that we aren't in the position nor authority to enforce those federal standards. Again, that, because I, I'm not familiar with these CFRs, and in a position to interpret them, I don't believe that's my, my role.
Right, we have, the county has gratuitously included conditions of approval requiring directing people to comply with some external jurisdiction's rules, and we could certainly gratuitously do that. We have no enforcement mechanism for the federal, or in this case, the state wildlife. Now, whether the, you know, if, if the commissioners feel that the underlying facts provide substantial evidence that link to a criteria, then that's, that's their prerogative as a governing body and, and the appellate body here, so, but, yeah, your statement is correct. We, we don't have enforcement as a county jurisdiction authority for the, for the federal regulations or the state wildlife.
We, we don't have enforcement as a county jurisdiction authority for the, for the federal regulations or the state wildlife rules.
I'm thinking about the, we had a decision, and I think they withdrew it, but a property we had, we heard a marijuana grow application appeal in northern Deschutes County where they were going to cross BLM land. And that was kind of a stumbling block, too. Well, they don't have, BLM says they don't have a right to access across, so there was no road. I kind of see that as similar to this, that there's a federal agency saying what they expect to happen is a take, which is... So I don't know if we just include as a condition of approval that they would have to, you have to deal with the regulations of the state, ODFW, and the federal wildlife, fish and wildlife, or whatever it is. I guess, is that a possibility, or I...
Certainly, the board could include that as, as a condition. Again, I think that's going to occur, and I believe that's what Matt's point was, it's going to occur independently anyway. The, the, the state wildlife folks and the federal wildlife folks, to the extent that they feel this triggers their involvement or crosses into their area, they have that ability to, to intervene. You're the local land use authority. There are other jurisdictions, including OLCC, that act independent of what you do. And so, you know, everybody sort of has a role here. If the board feels that some of those jurisdictional issues with other agencies justify or provide substantial evidence on a particular criteria before you, that's within your purview to, to make that decision.
So in our, and it would be, you're talking about a particular criteria relating to marijuana production on EFU lands?
Correct.
That we have to tie that to, and, so we'd have to look at the ordinance and say...
Yeah, these are essentially the rules that the applicant plays by, and if, if the rules are going to change, they typically have to change before their application goes in. Now, there's certainly some gray area for interpretation, and, and that's where certainly the board has tremendous deference on how it interprets its own code and what it deems to be substantial evidence. So I, I don't want to say the board can't proceed that way. There are certainly, you know, if folks that disagree with that will have certain appellate opportunities should they choose to challenge. But that applies on either side, no matter what your decision is.
So a bigger, bigger view here, this is existing land privately owned. There's other farming activities that happen on parcels like this and other places. Yes, we have a, you know, a private-public border here, but we're not creating more private land, so I'm just saying this is kind of an existing condition. And I would lean towards the higher-level concept of private property rights developing, doing activities that are authorized on your personal property as guidance here. You know, not wanting to kind of open up and use a federal discussion about endangered species as... as something that would stop this application.
That's what you're saying. Mr. Dare, what are your thoughts?
I think it's pretty amazing that the federal government and the state government know that the golden eagles are here. And whatever we do, I think it has to be a condition on the application. You know, I'm not sure the legal terminology, but I just think that, you know, everyone knows there's golden eagles there. So they need to be recognized and protected.
Condition of approval, then, as opposed to, as a denial based on substantial evidence that it's in the SBMH combining zone or some other... I'm, I'm... One question I had is what the difference, so this is one parcel that's near the, these nests, then there's another farm parcel right next to it, and so I'm wondering on an appeal, would someone say, "Well, how is my activity going to be different than others?" And I do think that's a question.
You didn't go, the site, there's the hay field down below, right by the road. And then the existing building is up the road, you know, and then you go up the hill even more where they were proposing to do the building, and then there's the property line.
Well, I'm just saying there's lots here and here, too, and the nests are supposedly, I'm just saying that...
Well, suburban has a lot of acreage out there.
Well, I, I don't know, I haven't made, I guess I'll see where we are on the other ones. I'm, if, if we pass it on everything else, I, I would think it should be a condition of approval. I'd kind of like to go forward and talk about some of the other issues, because I don't know. I was kind of convinced going into this that the department of, the Oregon Department of Letter made sense to me that there's, kind of, even though it's not called a, you know, a SBMH, it sounds like it should be, and it's like we haven't gotten around to it or we haven't done a process, but it sounds like, and that's, so the intent of what those are for is there, and so it was like, that's where I feel there's substantial evidence that's a problem, but...
So are you talking two or three, or are you saying on, on this?
On this one, well, I'm saying there's a rule to achieve compliance or deny the application. Well, at this point, unless there's, I'm kind of on the fence about whether we should deny the application over or not, but I would at least condition approval on, I mean, because that's what we do in condition we put in. They have to conform with state and federal restrictions and permitting, or whatever's required, or whatever, so that we put them on notice, they're going to have to go do this instead of somebody having to make a complaint that they haven't done it. So, so that's, I'm at least in favor of that, so.
Right, and I think what you're identifying is, is an option that wasn't outlined here in the, in the matrix. And that being, and offering this as, as an option that, no, the sensitive bird and mammal habitat combining zone is not applicable because it's not zoned such. However, at a condition of approval that they shall comply with and obtain all necessary permits to comply with state and federal standards. That gratuitous condition of approval that I...
The other question that I was left with is, is do we, you know, periodically go through and create new zones for these? I mean, when was the last time we created other...
In 2013, it said we did a comprehensive...
It'd be a work plan item.
Yeah, we, we did a comprehensive update to the county's comprehensive plan in 2013. It didn't necessarily, wasn't necessarily directed at this particular zone. Historically, there was a process of what was called periodic review, where comprehensive plans were formally adopted, and each element of the plan was, was reviewed and updated as needed. That process is not required by the county at this point by, by state law. However, there are opportunities, and, you know, policies even speak to continuing to review and coordinate and update the, the comprehensive plan, in particular, these inventories on, you know, using my words, on a regular basis. So there may be an opportunity.
Would that be a case-specific post-acknowledgement plan amendment? That's, that would be the process?
Certainly.
It could be either initiated by a property owner or the county?
Absolutely. And to Commissioner DeBones' point, could be a future work plan item.
Maybe we should go forward now and hit some of the other topics and then come back, maybe circle back to this one.
Okay. So on to page two of the matrix, issue number three was separation from youth activity center. Record includes comments and assertions that a youth activity center is operating on the property to the south of the subject property. We do have comments from the property owner indicating that the resident's children raise 4-H animals, and her husband has led archery shoots for others at the property. Another brief comment from the resident. We also have, in the summertime, 4-H kids come over. And then additional comments and assertions that this constitutes a youth activity center. The applicant contends it is not, provided evidence or, or record submittals countering indicating that the activities aren't associated with 4-H or FFA. And I want to acknowledge that this decision, staff's decision approving the project, did an analysis linking the identified livestock raising and other youth-related activities were accessory to the residential or farm use of the property. I want to note, I note that because that predated the, the board's decision. In the wave seer project, we're found that nearby 4-H, specified 4-H-related activities and youth-oriented equestrian activities constituted youth activity centers. I just want to acknowledge that a difference here than the wave seer project is, at least in staff's review, the, the record does not include specifics to the, the frequency, number of children, and description of the activities taking place.
So, thoughts?
I'll just acknowledge that we have been that 4-H family next to an applicant in the past, and I was involved with creating the, the code as a commissioner previously, so that wasn't the intention of this. You know, there, I do see the cases as a little different, and this is, you know, less formal impact than the previous, and I had, I had voted differently than you last time. So a clear position is this not a youth activity center.
Mr. Dare?
I'll agree.
So what I, I voted that, I voted twice, that a youth activity center in other applications had existed next door to a proposed marijuana grow. But I, I, there was different levels of proof, I think, and, and evidence about those. There was a, I mean, clearly testimony about a formal group meeting regularly, lots of kids. The other one, the wave seer, actually had both 4-H activities and horse riding activities that were pretty well documented. This, I didn't, this is not what I think raises to a level of a youth activity center. I, I've said before, I don't think there's such a thing as a permitted youth activity or a licensed youth activity. So I'm just saying when a lot of people gather, young people gather regularly, like they do, for the other exceptions for, in the rule for daycare or for schools, this can be a similar one, and there has been a public policy of not trying to have, I guess, marijuana businesses and marijuana grows right in the face of lots of young people, I guess. So, but this didn't seem to have the same amount of evidence. I also didn't think, though, that, I wasn't very appreciative in a way, or very persuaded by the applicants trying to prove that it shouldn't be a youth activity because they had a lot of animal complaints. That that was kind of a unrelated, or the hanging elk, or whatever it was. I just, that was just odd, but, so that didn't really help in making my decision. It was just, so, but I didn't, this isn't, to me, the same as the wave seer decision. And it was hard, I wish, if there'd been some real evidence of showing a group meeting there, I would might have had a different decision, but that's where I am, so. So that would be no, I guess, for all three of us on that.
Okay, thank you. Moving to page three of the matrix, issue number four, access. The applicability of the access standard for marijuana production. It's known that this segment of McKenzie Canyon Road is a private road, and it's indicated that's maintained by the adjacent property owners. There were cited concerns that, for the impacts on the, the road from traffic, as well as impacts on road condition. Applicant contends they complied with the access standard. I want to note that the access standard that's addressed here applies to marijuana production facilities with a mature marijuana plant canopy, 5,000 square feet or greater. So with a, a proposed 4,960 square foot mature marijuana plant canopy area, staff found that this criteria was not applicable. So the question before the board is, first, is this applicable? And therefore, has the applicant demonstrated compliance with the standard? Mr. Dare?
My question, Matt, to you, is the five greenhouses that they're building, what is the square footage of those?
I don't know off the top of my head the total square footage of the structures. I'm assuming that it's in excess, if your point is, is that that's in excess of 5,000 square feet, I would agree.
Aren't they, it's probably in the application, isn't it?
Somewhere back there.
So my understanding is the kind of the OLCC certified square footage of mature canopy? So that's how the rules were developed, the tier licenses of OLCC?
Plans show, let's see, four of the greenhouses are 30 by 70 each.
Yeah, 2,100.
And then additional, the vegetation greenhouse is 130 by 30.
So you got 8,000, and then 130 by 30 is, so you got about 10,000 square feet of greenhouses, right? Well, to me, this is one of the ones where, you know, as we've talked about when they were, the applicants were here, is that they've used the language of the ordinance to say they're going to do under 5,000 square feet. So it changes the obligation, and I, it's just, to me, that's the rule. If we had to change the rule, I mean, so they're, they're coming in in their application of the rule, I guess it becomes the requirement of the neighbors, if they ever, or somebody, if it ever gets beyond that, it changes, it really means their grow is invalid, because they haven't gotten permission on the road thing. And I still question whether they're, they're going to keep it at 5,000. As I've said another here, during the hearing, it didn't make sense that they would limit it if they're successful. But that said, I don't think we can, I don't feel comfortable making a decision anticipating them to do something different than what they've said, but it's kind of a catch 22 in a sense.
So it's actually 12,300 square feet that they're building? And then the existing building is what, like, gosh, I'm not sure how big that shop was, but...
We've had other ones where they were building 18,000 square feet and said they do five, less than 5,000. So it's, again, it becomes a policing or enforcement thing, so...
Yeah, the OLCC inspections, which we know hasn't been robust, but that is the plan, you know, when they get inspected, and Deschutes County's annual inspections confirming, "Show us your mature canopy area and your ancillary support services area." So that means, you know, they do have starts and support, just storage, so. So I do support that they, if yes, and continue reviewing the application.
Yeah, I, I feel like I, I have to say that as well, so that's the application, and so it met the standards of the, of the criteria.
I'm thinking that at some point we need to relook, reassess the 5,000 square foot non-road access because I just think that it could be quite impactful in this area. So of course I have to say yes here, but I, I think as a county, we need to look at that.
Didn't we change that rule in the, the 5,000 rule?
Did you?
Did we keep it the same, in that when we did the revised regulations? I thought we...
That, it seems to be, it seems to be the magic point.
We've come up against this before, and it was like, well, that seems kind of, why don't you always have to have access or...
Road studies, okay.
So I've got a doctor appointment at 12:30, I need to make a call, let's see if I can postpone that, or I, or I need to move on and cover a couple of things, like, can I make a, can we...
You want to, which are...
Take a quick break?
Sure.
Or, oh, take a break, okay.
Well, can we do both, I think, but let me take a quick break and see if I can move that back.
Five-minute break.
That would be done.
Can we turn the heat up a little?
Go outside real quick.
My nose is really cold. My nose is really cold. My nose is really cold.